Good morning. Call to order on City Council meeting, November the eighth, twenty twenty-two. It's nine a.m. Invitation, Councilmember Mary McKenna.
Please stand. Emily Pauling, we thank you for your creation, for each person here, for all of us, for the beauty of the world, for the beauty of all that you have given us. We seek your blessing, your continued blessing, on our community. We thank you for each person here, knowing that every single one of us wants a new and better Orange every day of the week, and we work for that in your name. We thank you for all of your blessings that you have showered on our community, and we know that the best is yet to come. And we pray for our mayor, who is not feeling well today, he's a little under the weather. We ask your blessing on him. We ask you to touch him right now and let him know that we are praying for him. We love you, Lord, and we ask you to be with us every day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three. Motion A, motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one-two-zero-zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. You have a motion.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Childs, and second by Mr. Bailey. Aye. Mayor McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Number four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not the item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated, as the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda. Your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. I have Paul Dickerson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Paul Dickerson, resident of Orange, have a business here locally, and I want to recognize our City of Orange Economic Development Corporation for their diligence in pursuit of making Orange a better place. Having gone through that process with economic development, I also want to recognize our city council for helping us begin a new venture, the office downtown. And that being said, I wanted to take this opportunity to formally invite you to our grand opening, which will be held November seventeenth, which is Thursday of next week. We'll have an open house from three to six. We'll be serving refreshments and gumbo from some other local city food trucks, and we will have a ribbon cutting at four o'clock. And I would very much appreciate your attendance and seeing what you've helped us accomplish and seeing how we're hoping to help Orange grow. Thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Paul was the only one that signed to speak, but if there's anyone else that would like to, now is the time. No one else, so we'll close. Citizen comments. Move to number five, city announcements. A, city staff announcements and city events. Good morning.
Good morning. So we're really excited, because the city meeting is hosting a Christmas event this year. In the past week, kind of stayed away, there was a lot going on in the beginning of December, but now some things have moved around, so we're very excited to bring you all an event for hosted by Explore Orange. Thursday, December first, we will have a Christmas open house at City Hall. That'll be from five to seven, refreshments, kids activities, pictures of Santa Claus. We're very excited about that. Of course, as all our events, the admission will be free of charge. Friday, hopefully, there are local teams going to the playoffs, and we encourage you, even if it's not your school, should go support them. And then Saturday, from ten to four, we have the gumdrop shop. It's essentially the Christmas version of Art in the Park. We're very excited to have a lot of Christmas vendors, or Christmas gifts out there from our vendors. We encourage everyone to go out there and get some gifts for your coworkers, or your family, friends, anything like that that you can do to support our local vendors that will be out there, or Christmas activity for your friends as well. Food trucks, kids activities. And then, right after that finishes, we encourage you to all set up your lunch chairs and either/or participate in the Kiwanis Christmas parade. Their seventy-third year, and we're very, very excited that they're hosting it again. And that will be that evening, so if y'all have any questions, please feel free to give me a call, or go to our Facebook page, Explore Orange, or you can find updates on the City of Orange, Texas slash government on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you. Number six, proclamation. A, Gift of Life Prostate Cancer Awareness Day in Orange.
Yes, sir.
Do you agree to read the proclamation?
If you agree to it, then present it to these smart students.
Okay. Proclamation of the Office of the Mayor of the City of Orange. Whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men, aside from skin cancer, and about one in eight men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer during their lifetime, and whereas Texas is the medically insured capital of the United States with more than four-point-three-million Texans without coverage, and whereas in 2022, it is estimated that seventeen thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty men in Texas will be diagnosed with prostate cancer, and approximately two-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty will die from this disease. And whereas Gift of Life, in collaboration with its medical partners, makes available men's free health care services, including prostate-specific antigen PSA screenings, primary care, HIV and hepatitis C test, along with onsite physicians who review outcomes and navigate men to care, and whereas Gift of Life will host a significant Saturday regional screening event on November fifteenth at the Orange Baptist outpatient lobby, and whereas since two-thousand, more than ten-thousand-seven-hundred-southeast Texas, men have received the Gift of Life prostate cancer screenings, helping to extend the lives of seventy-seven men who were diagnosed with cancer and who were provided access to diagnostic evaluations and treatment. Now therefore, I, Larry Spears, Jr., mayor of the City of Orange, Texas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, November the eighth, as Gift of Life Prostate Cancer Awareness Day in Orange. And I also urge all men in our community to pursue preventative health practices and early detection efforts. In witness herof, I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the seal of the City of Orange, Texas, to be hereto affix this eighth day of November, twenty twenty-two.
I just come over there and go take some pictures.
Okay.
Put you on Facebook. Because they don't say.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Thank you for allowing Gift of Life to come before you and share this important message with you and with everyone here. My name is Quintella Smith, and with me today is Jeffrey Jefferson. We represent the Gift of Life. Gift of Life is raising awareness of prostate cancer. Aside from skin cancer, as you mentioned, prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men. This year, approximately seventeen thousand Texans will be diagnosed with prostate cancer, nearly three thousand will die from this disease. Gift of Life is the most preeminent cancer-fighting organization of its kind in the state of Texas. Through education, awareness, and early detection, Gift of Life seeks to reduce the devastation caused by cancer in our communities. Gift of Life hosts men's health screenings throughout the year for medically underserved men who out our area. We encourage those men who can't afford health insurance or the high deductibles to take advantage of our life-saving services. These screenings are simple, non-invasive tests. Men's screenings include the prostate-specific antigen blood test used to help diagnose prostate cancer, as well as primary care tests, HIV, and hepatitis C tests. And we also have onsite physicians, so that they can have discussions and consultations about their outcomes. Men with abnormal outcomes are fully navigated through follow-up care, with Gift of Life paying for additional diagnostics and testing. So on Tuesday, November fifteenth, Gift of Life will host a free men's health screening event at the Baptist outpatient lobby, six oh eight Strickland, between nine a.m. and twelve noon. We'll have refreshments and lunch and some giveaways, and we provide a compassionate, wonderful, and warm environment where men can come at a scheduled time to take advantage of our services. We ask for the community's support as we strive to increase awareness for prostate cancer and register eligible men for appointments to be screened. It's all about early detection and saving lives. Men can find out if they're eligible by calling our office or visiting our website. Again, thank you for helping us to get this important message out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Number seven, consider agenda. A, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes. B, October the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, regular city council meeting minutes.
Motion.
I've got a motion from Mr. Childs, and a second from Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
An aye.
An aye myself. Number eight, ordinances. A, first reading, consider an ordinance of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter twelve, planning and zoning, section one-two-point-six-zero-six A, pertaining to accessory buildings and historic overlay zoning district. Section twelve-point-six-zero-six A, pertaining to okay materials and historic overlay zoning district. Section one-two-point-six-one-one, pertaining to pod-type and complex-type containers, providing an effective date, providing a penalty clause, providing a severity-realty clause, repealing any ordinance in conflict with this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, and other matters. Mr. Childs?
Last week, the planning and zoning commission in the city council held a joint public hearing on amending the zoning ordinance, regulating shipping containers, specifically cottage-type containers and pod-type containers. And then we have found out some kind of, recently, that the ordinance conflicted with state law, so this is an ordinance that brings the city into compliance with state law and planning and zoning information after the public hearing, voted five to zero in the court.
We have a motion.
Motion.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mrs. Ennigan.
Aye.
Aye.
An aye myself. Number nine, resolutions. A, final reading, consider a motion approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with Bradley Williford, Little Texas Teahouse, three oh eight Porter Street, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three zero, in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars. First reading was October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Craig?
Yes, sir. So final public action step, if you will, and then we can move forward with actually signing off on the EDC incentive agreement. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
If I have any questions?
You got it completed, don't it?
Well, this is the agreement part of it. Yes, we are at a point now where we can sign off on the public action steps, and then they will move forward with actually doing the project.
Do we have a motion? A motion by Mr. Childs, a second by Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Ennigan, aye?
Aye.
An aye myself. B, final reading, consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with Raj Corporal, four oh nine Express, twelve fourteen North Sixteenth Street, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three zero, in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand. First reading, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Craig?
Again, final public action step, and as the project moves forward, there are some other items that have to be approved, working through the intelligence department that had taken place recently. So we're at a point now where we can execute that agreement, and it'll be on hold until other actions taken. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Childs. Mrs. Ennigan, aye?
Aye.
An aye myself. C, consider a resolution of the City of Orange, Texas, approving the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. Billough?
Mayor Pro Tem, council, good morning. This is something that doesn't come around very often. It's required by FEMA to be updated every five years, is the Hazard Mitigation Action Plan. Of course, we're in partnership with the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, and they reached out to H two O Partners, and we got notified earlier this month that our Hazard Mitigation Plan is to FEMA standards. So that's, and this just helps us reduce the cost to the city, should we have, you know, the storms like we've had, as far as updating. Getting to equipment.
Thank you very much.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ennigan, second by Mrs. McKenna. Mrs. Ennigan?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
An aye myself. D, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Deep South Racing Association, DSR A, in the amount of fifteen thousand to host a drag boat races event at the city boat ramp on May twenty, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Harold?
Good morning.
Not Ms. Downs. Not Ms. Downs, Ms. Harold.
I'm getting used to it. Thank you so much. The CBD is looking forward to bringing DSR A back, of course, at your approval. We've had it for the last few years. Last year was the first year that I was able to experience it, and from what Hillary and Randy and Jay shared, that our attendance was really up. And so that is encouraging, and we're looking forward to hopefully getting it up even more this year. But they're a great organization to work with. We've worked with them for years, so we're excited to do it again, hopefully in twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Harold. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Childs, a second by Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Ennigan?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
An aye myself. E, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Skywonder Power Tech in the amount of thirty thousand to host a fireworks show for the Fourth of July celebration. Ms. Harold?
This is the amount that we agreed on last year. It is now the minimum requirement for Skywonder, the minimum amount. It was a great show last year. We got a lot of compliments, and as DSR A, we have worked with them for many, many years, and we're excited to do it again.
Awesome. Motion?
Motion.
Second. A motion by Mrs. McKenna, second by Mrs. Ennigan. Mrs. Ennigan, aye?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
An aye myself. Thank you, Harold. F, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Pumps of Houston Incorporated in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand nine hundred per boat, number two oh twenty-three dash zero four Burton, Jackson and Simmons Pumps only, in connection with American Rescue Plan and ARPA funds. Mr. Jack?
Yes, thank you. I got a little bit more than you. This contract is to replace pumps, not replace, but upgrade pumps, that keep our mechanical spaces dry during start events in this, in these three pump stations. Staff recommends approval.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Childs, second by Mrs. McKenna. Mrs. Ennigan, aye? Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Childs?
Aye.
Mrs. Bailey?
Aye.
An aye myself. Thank you. Number ten, discussion action. A, consider a motion approving the certification certification of the twenty twenty-two current tax roll and the twenty twenty-two delinquent tax roll as submitted by Karen Fisher, Orange County Tax Assessor/Collector. Ms. Eto'o?
Yes, good morning. This is to certify the tax roll that we give to the tax assessor/collector, and the amount for the current tax roll, which is the amount charged to the citizens, not, that we'll receive a hundred percent of it, which we typically do. We typically receive ninety-six percent on average, but the current is about nine-point-five million, and the delinquent is about one-point-three million.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Motion for Mr. Childs, second for Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Ennigan, aye? Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Childs?
Aye.
An aye myself. B, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the city's quarterly investment report for the period ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Eto'o?
Yes, so this is the city's investment report for the end of September. It shows you the cash balances, the investments. We still have the CD at first financial, which renewed in August. As I said earlier, the EDC, so you have, gives the same rates, but renewed that point-eight percent, which it was point-one-two percent, so that's an improvement. We have thirty-two million four fifty-five in cash and investments currently at the city, which is all collateralized. We are switched, I've been working for a few months, to switch to the sweep account to get a better rate, since we're each person now going up, but that's begun November first. I checked, and the rate for the city is going to be, well, it was, it's fixed rates every day, but as of yesterday, it was three-point-nine now. So we will be getting significantly more interest income now that the rates are going up, and that will, probably will be able to be our benchmark, which was the six-month treasury bills, which is two-point-nine. So we're going in the right direction.
Right. Does anybody have any discussion? No?
Motion.
Got a motion? From Mr. Bailey, a second from Mrs. McKenna. Mrs. Ennigan?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Or Mr. Bailey? An aye myself. D, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the Orange Economic Development Corporation investment report for the former ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Eto'o?
So this is the EDC's investment report for the September of January quarter, and I presented that earlier, if you have any questions.
Any discussion? Nope. A motion?
Motion.
Motion for Mrs. McKenna, and second from Mr. Childs. Mrs. Ennigan?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? An aye myself. E, consider a motion approving. That's the one?
Yeah. He did, he read D. We need to go back and do C.
C?
Yes.
Excuse me. Consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the Orange Economic Development Corporation financial report for the quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Yes, so this is the EDC's financial report, which I presented earlier in the EDC board.
Okay. Any discussion?
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Childs, and second for Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Ennigan?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
An aye myself. Now moving on to E.
You just trying to make sure we're paying attention.
Consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC in the form of a motion of intent approving an EDC incentive for Flexis Urgent Care, thirty-seven thirty-seven North Sixteenth Street, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three two, for the eligible infrastructure improvements in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand for the purpose of economic development. Mr. Craig?
Yes, the Mayor Pro Tem Council. So this is an agenda item that's a follow-up to a public hearing that was held earlier this morning at the EDC level. So let me just specify the targeted infrastructure items that basically will lend itself to this not to exceed fifty thousand EDC incentive. First of all, the estimated capital investment is in the two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-dollar range. It will go toward electrical upgrades, plumbing upgrades, and new signage. The current location has a sign and triangle area network that will move, they relocated to the office park and Northway Shopping Center, and this urgent care will go into that space. So basically, there will be a minimum of six new jobs that will come to this particular site, and extended hours, as discussed in this morning's public hearing. So subject to your approval, we move forward in a sixty-day waiting period and work with the city attorney's office to actually draft the EDC incentive agreement, which is always in the form of a reimbursement incentive. So I'll turn it back over to you to answer any questions you have.
Anybody have any question for discussion? No discussion? I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second. A motion by Mr. Childs, and a second by Mrs. Ennigan. Mrs. Ennigan?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
And I as well. I'm really excited about this coming to Northway Shopping Center, so I'm just four-foot traffic in that center, and it's been low for people for years, so I'm really excited about it. F, consider a motion abandoning the alley located between Fifteenth Street and Sixteenth Street and extending approximately hundred-and-forty-one feet southward from Shoulders Avenue. Mr. Childs?
Yes, for the four oh nine express convenience store project, developer owns the property on both sides of this alley, and so he has requested that the alley be abandoned in order to combine the lots and then construct the four oh nine express project. Center Point has a six-inch of gas line in that alley. We understand it's been abandoned, but Center Point has not yet given us written approval of the abandonment. So the planning and zoning commission considered this last week, and they voted five to zero directly in conditional approval upon Center Point providing this in-rotting that they do not approve of.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And motion is conditional approval, rather.
Right.
Is that right?
Got a motion from Mrs. Ennigan, a second from Mrs. McKenna. Mrs. Ennigan?
Aye.
And Childs? An aye myself. G, consider a motion canceling the November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, regular city council meeting.
Mr. Burge, council, as we have done traditionally over the last several years, canceled the second meeting in November and December, because it's so close to the holidays. Got a welcome.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mrs. McKenna. Mrs. Ennigan, aye? Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Eleven reports. A, city manager report?
Friday, November the eleventh is a city holiday. It's Veterans Day, so city offices will be closed. Waste management will have regular, their regular service will service those folks. Those of us who have Friday service would like to say thank you to all my veteran brothers and sisters who have served, and thanks to those families who have supported us over the years.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Bailey, city council report, starting at my left. Mrs. Hennigan, number four. Mrs. McKenna?
Congratulations to the vets on Veterans Day. Today is election day, so go vote. Remember the mayor in your prayers. He is not feeling well, and we need him going full blast because he is a dynamite part of this city. And for Halloween, I just want to say that, you know, I ran the circle of the library, the fire department, and the police department, and it really touched my heart to see what those city employees, how much they feel and are concerned for the children of this community. So I just want to say thank you to all of them.
Mr. Childs?
I was out last time, so congratulations, Ms. Harold. I hope you have a wonderful life, and also, this is the last day to vote, so please be all booked.
Spilled all out. Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Go vote. Can't drive if you don't vote.
Thank you. Number 12, adjourn to close executive session. A, deliberation with city attorney pursuant to chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. One, deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property as authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, regarding the purchase and/or value of real estate property for expansion of multiple facilities. Two, deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property as authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, regarding the purchase and/or value of real property for expansion of multiple facilities.
Yes.
Municipal facilities. Thank you.
That's it. Those who aren't part of city staff?
Okay. They can help in session.
Part of us don't ring, though.
No, they don't exist.
Okay, Mr. Bailey, if you will?
Council mayor, coming out of the executive session, we're going to ask that you pass a motion authorizing the city manager to pursue the purchase of a unapproved tract of land that is 12.652 acres for the purchase price of $253,040.
You have a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Childs. Mrs. Hennigan?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And I myself.
And then the second agenda item, there is no action.
No, we're taking on the second agenda. So number 14, adjournment. Do I have a motion adjourned?
Motion.
Motion by everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Needing adjourned.